Good evening. Good evening, welcome. Good evening. Exciting, exciting night tonight. Welcome to the April 20th, 2022 meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for road call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Weiss has an excused absence tonight.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Mark Finnegan, the lead pastor for Life Point Church. Thank you, Pastor.
All right, let's all bow our heads and pray. Lord, you tell us that we are fearfully and wonderfully made in your image. Lord, we've come here today and we are praying to you. You say that if anyone lacks wisdom, let them ask and you freely give it. Well, Lord, we all lack wisdom. So we ask for wisdom in this meeting. We ask that you would be present and we ask that in the end of it, you would get all the glory. So bless this meeting and we pray it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its人民 for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. Thank you. We have some really exciting things at the top of the hour. And that is, we have some proclamations, presentations, and we also are going to be honoring some of our employees for our service that they have made to the city of Oceanside. And believe me, some of them have really done a whole lot for our community. Okay, I'm going to start with the Mean Green Team coming down with Colleen Foster. Come on down, Colleen. This is a proclamation in honor of Earth Month 2022. Whereas, the mission of the city of Oceanside's Green Oceanside Campaign is to teach residents and local businesses the importance of conserving natural resources, protecting the environment, and becoming better stewards of the earth through community involvement and engagement. And whereas, each year, Green Oceanside staff, that's the green team, partner organizations and youth collaborate to facilitate public education, participation, and actions that help our community protect the environment through zero waste, watershed protection, water efficiency, climate action, and energy conservation. And whereas, in recognition of Earth Month 2022, the Mean Green Oceanside Team presents Earth Day of Service and Celebration whereby Oceanside residents, local businesses, and other community members can participate in a community-wide cleanup and Earth Festival event at Buccaneer Park on April 23rd, this coming Saturday. At the event, participants will learn ways in which to keep Oceanside beautiful and protected for future generations, and will also have the opportunity to help clean up litter at five locations, this is a great thing that residents do, volunteers do, along Loma Alta Creek and Guena Vista Creek. And whereas, through the cumulative efforts of residents, local businesses, and other community members and youth, the city of Oceanside will move closer to achieving zero waste, yeah, protecting our watersheds, increasing water efficiency, and continuing our efforts in addressing climate change and energy conservation. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby challenge all residents to participate in Oceanside's Earth Day of Service events and make our community and the world a better place to live.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and council. We greatly appreciate all your support towards sustainability. Oceanside has been a leader in sustainability. This is our 12th year in celebrating the city's Green Oceanside program and Earth Month, made possible by all of the individuals up here and our team that works behind watershed protection, water use efficiency, and zero waste. Justin and I couldn't do any of this without, you know, our young leaders here. And without you as our residents and our business members, we have a lot of support in our community. This weekend's events are supported by Waste Management. They've come up with these really cool Stay Classy O-Side t-shirts. So come out to the cleanup this Saturday and to the Earth Festival event at Buccaneer Park, clean up our neighborhood, help preserve our community, and get a free shirt while you're at it. So thank you again for all your support. And remember, Earth Day is not just April 22nd, but it's every day. So anything you do at home, work, and out at the beach and in our community makes a difference. So thank you to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Green Team. Thank you very much. Okay, this next proclamation is very special. This is a recent celebration in our state, just started 2019. And for us here in Oceanside, a very, very critical piece of our economic development, of our cultural diversity and identity, and that is proclamation in honor of California Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, Oceanside, April 2022. Could you guys come on down, please? We've got the Cultural District, members of the Cultural District. We've got Don Myers, who's actually working on a mosaic that is stained glass. And we're just so, so excited about what is happening in Oceanside and how this all started. So I've got this proclamation, I'm going to go ahead and start reading it, and then we're going to have introductions. Whereas, in 2019, Californians for the Arts successfully campaigned for the state to recognize and celebrate the arts by declaring April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month through concurrent resolutions in the California Legislature. And whereas, this year's theme is arts work, to heal, to build community, to advance justice, to empower youth, and to create jobs. And whereas, the proposal for an Oceanside California Cultural District was chosen as one of 14 inaugural cultural districts in the state of California. And whereas, Oceanside's Oh Arts Master Plan for the Arts, the city's first cultural plan, guides the city's work in partnership with the community, with goals and strategies that address placemaking through public art, economic development, education, and creating opportunities for artists in visual and performing arts to thrive, enhancing the arts throughout our community and within city buildings. And whereas, the city of Oceanside values its partnerships such as with the Oceanside Public Library, Oceanside Museum of Art, California Surf Museum, Main Street Oceanside, Visit Oceanside, Star Theater Company, Oceanside Theater Company at the Sunshine Brooks Theater, Hill Street Country Club, Oceanside International Film Festival, Oceanside Cultural Arts Foundation, Oceanside Friends of the Arts, businesses and nonprofit organizations dedicated to the amplification of visual and performing arts, and the very talented Steering Committee of the Oceanside California Cultural District, dedicated to promoting unified support for the arts. That's a mouthful, huh? And whereas, in addition, the city celebrates its cultural art and diversity through several annual celebrations featuring art through music, performances, and the spoken word, such as with the Phil Am Cultural Celebration, Juneteenth, Samoan Cultural Celebration, Pride by the Beach, Dia de los Muertos, and Noche Mexicana. And whereas, current cultural arts projects include Main Street's Art Excites, featuring Don Myers' Stained Glass, its fourth Bureau project that has included community participation to be dedicated summer 2022, Love the O Interactive Sculpture to be created by Randall Art Branch at the Oceanside Harbor, and Oceanside Culture Fest planned for October 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in the city of Oceanside, and encourage all residents to celebrate the power, energy, and beauty of the art in our community. Thank you. So I'm going to hand the mic over to CJ.
Thank you, thank you. Well, the arts do work and they do show up. My goodness, what a great group we have here today. There's lots that we could talk about, about the arts here in Oceanside, the Oceanside Cultural District, one of only 14 in the state of California. Really extraordinary. But I do want to give a moment to Don Myers and Gumaro Escarsega with Main Street to talk about a project that they're currently working on.
Thank you, guys, and welcome. I gotta thank Mayor Sanchez and the council, all my staff that work with me, Mark Mo, Krista, Kathy, these guys are wonderful people, and this guy right here is a great support. So I can't do it, I couldn't have done it without the community. This was a big effort, it took everyone to finish it, and it was really a lot of fun. I'm gonna introduce you to Gumaro.
Thanks, Don. Thank you, everybody, for supporting the arts and, you know, thank you councilmembers and mayor to continue to help us and steer us to the right direction where we're heading here. But I just want to announce that Phase One of Art Excites is complete. And thanks to Don Myers, we have three murals that are up. One is our Star Theater, the other two are Northern Pine Brewery and That Boy Good, and then the Mosaic mural, which has been a huge community project, especially during COVID. This was developed during COVID. So right before COVID hit, we had our first workshop. As you can see, our then-mayor, Peter Weiss, was actually one of the first guys to put a tile, and then we finished off with Mayor Sanchez here to finish up the mosaics. So thank you, big thoughts. And I just want to say, this has been a huge project for the city. The city has invested, the community has invested over $30,000 in this program, at least through Phase One. And we're going to end up investing over $50,000 in arts just through this Phase One of this mural project, which is pretty remarkable. And thanks to the community of Oceanside to really make this happen for us. And we will continue to do more as long as the appetite is there, and we hope to see you guys again here another time. And thank you.
Well, before we go into introductions, starting that way, I just want to say a couple more words here because art excites. I hadn't even heard about it till your call, Gumaro. And when I went over to the shop, Don's shop, stained glass, I was wowed. This is one of the only places around here where you can do stained glass work, and he does. He teaches lots of classes. I mean, I hear from people now, now that I'm aware, that he really does put his heart into it, you know, even materials. Sometimes I've heard that you even contribute some of the materials. But Don Myers, he's not only visual arts, he's also performing arts. He actually contributes to the performing arts because he has his own band and creates his own music. And this is really, really wonderful for the city of Oceanside. So, and is there still a campaign for this fourth mural?
Thank you. Yes, there is. And we're still taking donations. So how it works, you get to purchase one of the fish that's in the mural. We have from 300 to a couple thousand dollars available. If you guys are interested, just let us know. And I also want to do a shout out here because actually, we couldn't do this without the Oceanside Glass and Tile Company that has been involved with us. They have donated. They have donated their special glass that have they kept in their office in a secure place because it's just special glass. And to trust Don with that glass is quite remarkable. So thank you, Pamela, you know? But this is a really, really good times, and thank you guys for your support. But if you guys are interested in buying a fish, go to Main Street Oceanside website. You guys can download the application and see what's available. And also, we're celebrating with a block party. So sign up, subscribe to our e-newsletters, and so we can give you updates on when this block party is going to happen. We're going to unveil the mural. Remember, this mural that you see in these pictures is 16 feet by 12 feet high mural. So it's a humongous mural. It's going to be located in the corner of Denmark and Mission Avenue. It's going to be a great gateway to our downtown, especially going down the ocean. So it's going to be beautiful sea life. And right now, we're also doing Instagram campaign or social media campaign to select names. So we have narrowed down to four names of what this is going to be called, and we're asking the community now to, shall we, you know, vote for your best name on this mural?
Thank you, Gumaro. Thank you, thank you, Don. Thank you very much. Thank you. And so who volunteers to say all the names that are people that are here, or shall we just pass the mic?
I think we better pass the mic.
Okay, starting with Lesi here.
Lesi Goll, Visit Oceanside.
Sietli Mejia, Oceanside Museum of Art.
Carly Starborough, Lo Niles, Oceanside International Film Festival.
Amber Newman, Oceanside Cultural Arts Foundation.
David Newman, Oceanside Cultural Arts Foundation.
Lou Niles, Oceanside International Film Festival and Oceanside Cultural District Steering Committee.
Robert Parker, Oceanside Cultural Arts Foundation and the Oceanside Cultural Steering District Committee.
Jane Marshall, President of Oceanside Community Neighborhood, as well as the Steering Committee for the Arts District.
John McCoy, President of the Oceanside Theater Company. We're at the Brooks, right in the center of the Cultural District, and happy to be here. Thank you.
Leigh Anne Garmes, Board Member of Oceanside Theater Company at the Brooks and Steering Committee Member, Cultural Arts Committee.
Hey, neighbors. Sharon Douglas, Star Theater Board President. I'm here to invite you to come see Newsies, and you can see I came appropriately dressed for it. Opening on April 29th for two weekends. We have some actors working really hard. Please join us.
Hi, everyone. I'm Shani Vitale, Associate Planner in the Planning Division and a member of the Steering District for the Cultural District.
Pam Bartholomew, Oceanside Glass and Tile.
John Staley, newest member of Oceanside Glass and Tile. Thanks to Pam.
And I'm CJ Demento. I'm with the Oceanside Public Library, Staff Liaison to the Oceanside Arts Commission, and on the Steering Committee for the Oceanside California Cultural District.
Okay, you were going to hand out the rest of them. Okay, we're going to have a picture. So kind of closer together. Thank you. And I want to also say that performing arts, as we're gathering, as we're gathering, the performing arts here in Oceanside include, as you know, music, dance, the spoken word, someone reminded me, don't forget the spoken word. And I just went to a place called the Thunderbird Analog Recording Studio in South O, and I was amazed. The band that was there, Chicken Bone Slim and The Biscuits, actually, they, last night, they won the award for Jazz and Blues from the San Diego Music Awards. So that's pretty exciting to have such a place here in Oceanside. Thank you. Thank you. Great big hand to these guys who work hard for us to bring us art. Thank you. Yes. Next, Employee Service Awards, yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Jenny Ybarra, Human Resource Technician. This evening, I have the honor and pleasure of presenting to you, our staff, and the members of the public here tonight, those employees who have reached the noteworthy accomplishment of 20 or more years of service with the city of Oceanside. As we have done most recently, I will ask the respective department head or supervisor to join Mayor Sanchez to help provide each award to tonight's recipient. At this time, I would ask that Fire Chief Rick Robinson, please come forward.
Coming down, chief.
The first employee to be recognized from the fire department is Blake Bomina.
All right, Blake.
Blake began his career with the city of Oceanside in March 2002. Blake was a seasonal lifeguard before becoming an aquatic technician. In March of 2007, Blake became a beach lifeguard sergeant. Blake was promoted into his current role as a beach lifeguard lieutenant in November 2012. Please join me in congratulating Blake for 20 years of service to his community.
Wow, congratulations, 20 years. Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Our next employee is Emil Lockendike.
Coming down, Emil.
Emil also began his career in March 2002 as a seasonal lifeguard. Emil became a beach lifeguard sergeant in March of 2007. One year later, Emil promoted to beach lifeguard lieutenant, where he continues to serve today. Let's congratulate Emil for his 20 years of service. Thank you, Emil. Our next employee has been serving the Oceanside Fire Department for 25 years, Bill Curtis.
Whoa, give it up for Bill.
Bill joined the city of Oceanside in February 1997. Bill served the community as an aquatic technician until late 2003, when he became a lifeguard lieutenant. In February 2008, Bill was promoted to his current role as beach lifeguard captain. Please join me in congratulating Bill for his 25 years of service. Our next award recipient is from the library department. Sherri Cosby, will you please join the mayor at this time? Brad Penner.
All right, Brad.
Brad was hired with the city of Oceanside Library in January of 2002 as principal librarian. Brad became the library division manager in May 2009. Brad has devoted his career at the library and continues to create new opportunities for the library and the community.
Thank you, Brad. Wait, wait, wait. His family's here. Hold on, hold on. Come on down. Beautiful family here, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Our next employee is from the Neighborhood Services Department, Mark Olson. Will you please come join the mayor?
He's the immediate supervisor.
Amanda Roswell.
Amanda.
Amanda began her career with the city of Oceanside in March of 2002. Amanda became a recreation supervisor in April 2012. After overseeing the programs and staff at our aquatic facilities for many years, Amanda recently became the city's first aquatic program administrator in February of this year. Let's congratulate Amanda on her 20 years of service. Thank you, Amanda. Our next award recipient is from our police department. Chief Armijo, will you please come forward? And Pamela Armijo. Pamela launched her career with the police department in April 2002. Pamela served as a community service officer until 2016, when she became a field evidence technician. Pamela became a leader in the department and was promoted to senior field evidence technician, where she continues to serve today. Let's congratulate Pamela on her 20 years of service with the city of Oceanside. Thank you, Pamela. Our next award recipient is from Public Works. Hamid, would you please come forward? Nathan Rorick. Nathan began his career with the city of Oceanside in January 2002. Nathan devoted his time to the parking enforcement division. He was hired as a parking enforcement officer I and became a parking enforcement officer II in August of 2004. Nathan was promoted as senior parking enforcement officer as of August 2021 and continues to serve the agency and the community in this capacity. Please join me in congratulating Nathan for 20 years of service to our community.
Wait, we got, we got family here, friends. 37 years, wow, fantastic. Congratulations.
Our last award recipient this evening is from Water Utilities. Leah, come forward. Said Nori Bushieri. Said joined the Water Utilities Department as a Geographical Information Systems Specialist in January 2002. Said was promoted to GIS Supervisor in May of 2016. Said continues to lead as the supervisor today. Please join me in congratulating Said for 20 years of service.
Come on down, family.
Thank you so much. That concludes tonight's Service Award. On behalf of the city of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone recognized this evening. Thank you for your continued commitment to your community. Please join me in a round of applause for tonight's recipient. Please join me in a round of applause for tonight's recipient.
It's like Alice in Wonderland, okay, where do I sit today?
Okay, wow, that was a lot of really great excitement and lots of good stuff that's happening in Oceanside, especially the city employees, who really commit a whole lot with their family as well. Okay, we have closed session report.
Thank you. There was no meeting on Item 1 of the agenda. On Item 2, the council met on two items under 2A, workers' compensation cases involving Raymond Melendez and Timothy Pruitt. There's no action to report on those two items tonight. Council also met on the arbitration item involving Brandon Atkins versus City of Oceanside, and there is no reportable action under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next are our Consent Calendar Items. Those are Items 4 through 16. Item number 12 has been removed by staff and will be coming to the council on a later date. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second for approval.
And there is no public on any of the items.
Great, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Do we have any off-agenda public communications?
We have two speakers registered on Item Number 19, Off-Agenda Items. Our first speaker is Roger Davenport, to be followed by Cindy Davenport.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Roger Davenport. I'm living at 541 Crouch Street. And I appreciate that the city is recognizing Earth Day this year, and I look forward to the event this Saturday at Buccaneer Park. That's from 9 to 1. And to combat global warming and global climate change, reduce our carbon footprint, one of the best things a homeowner can do is to reduce or eliminate gas usage by electrification of their appliances in their home. For example, a gas water heater generates about 50% of a typical home's emissions, and you can cut your onsite emissions in half by just replacing the gas water heater with an electric water heater. And heat pump water heaters, that are three to four times as efficient as traditional electric water heaters, use very little energy and can save money. You can reduce your carbon footprint even more by getting rid of other gas appliances, such as furnaces and stoves. So, the question is, what can a person do to get started? And the good news is, a new program has just started in California that provides grants and assistance to people wanting to electrify existing homes. Details are at the website, switcheson.org. So you can see it there on the thing. Specifically, you can get free technical support for home electrification programs. You can get free loan program of an induction cooker for three weeks, so you can take it home and try out modern electric cooking. And then they have grant programs where you can get $3,000 to replace either a gas or propane furnace with either a central or a split unit heat pump heating and cooling system. And I'd note that not only do you get heating, you get air conditioning as well from these electric units. And you can get $1,000 to replace an existing electric water heater with a heat pump water heater, and $3,100 to replace an existing gas or propane water heater with a heat pump water heater. So these grants go a long way towards the total cost of making the switch. And I know people who have actually benefited from this program already. So I wanted to make people aware that the Sierra Club will have a table at the Buccaneer Parks Celebration this Saturday. And we'll have more information, we'd be happy to answer any questions people have and provide information about building electrification. We'll also be giving out free plants, if anyone wants one of those. And I hope to see people there. And this is, in closing, just something that nearly every homeowner could do to reduce their carbon footprint and save money at the same time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Yes, the first Earth Day was April 22nd, 1970. And so it's really imperative that we celebrate it this year. We have a lot of work to do. Now, an individual, it is harder to make an impact to fight climate change for an individual, but with this new program, it's almost a no-brainer, and so we're really glad to promote that. We all know that there's been an increase in childhood asthma, and part of that is from emissions coming within your own home. Gas appliances do emit emissions in your home that are dangerous to your health, and that's why you need a carbon monoxide monitor. But if you electrify your home, you don't have to worry about that. So, again, individuals, it's great if individuals can do something, but what we really need is political will. And so that's why I and many people in the community worked with staff and tried to promote a good climate action plan for the City of Oceanside. And the City of Oceanside did unanimously adopt a climate action plan in May of 2019. And so I'd like to ask, we don't like to ask, to have an update. What's being done on the climate action plan? We'd like to see some progress. Well, one of the easiest things that the city could do is to vote for the community choice energy possibilities that we have here in the County of San Diego. That way, we can not only reduce energy costs for everyone, but we can also get revenue for the city, and that will really help us in adopting some more programs to fight climate change. Adopting community choice energy alone helps us with our climate action plan, but the revenue will really help us. So I'd like to ask that you please agendize that pretty soon. It will just benefit Oceanside. All of the other North County cities have voted to adopt it. So, let's go, Oceanside, and Happy Earth Day.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers registered for this item.
Thank you. Do we have any general council member comments at this time? Oh, okay. Our two remaining items are public hearing items that are timed certain at 6 o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and take a break until 6 o'clock. Thank you. Sorry, is that better? So, it's 6 o'clock. These are the public hearing items, Items 17 and 18. Let's go ahead and get started on Item Number 17. That is Administration of a Public Hearing on Proposed Funding Priorities for the Use of HOME Home ARPA Funds and Adoption of a Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022 Annual Action Plan Identifying Programs and Activities to Be Funded. Authorization for its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD, and Acceptance of Home ARPA Grant Funds for Programs and Activities Included in the Annual Action Plan. I want to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from the council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Just staff.
Staff?
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We do not have any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead then begin with a report from Ms. Leilani Hines, our Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Ms. Hines?
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers of the public tonight. We are here for a public hearing item to consider a new federal funding source out of the COVID-19 pandemic relief programs and all those actions that are necessary to receive the funding. So as you stated tonight, is that public hearing to get more input on the plan for the use of the Home ARP dollars, and then to approve that home action plan so that we can submit that to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and receive the funding. So a little bit of background. As a result of the American Rescue Plan Act, there was about $1.9 trillion approved in March 2021. $5 billion for Home ARP funding to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability across the country. The San Diego region received about $43 million. Of that, $2.2 million is for the City of Oceanside. In September 2021, HUD did release and publish their guidance for the Home ARP funding and how we could use those funds. And as part of that guidance, they really emphasized development of a plan, consulting with stakeholders, and a rigorous public participation process, hence why we are here with you tonight. And then we will be submitting this as an amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan that you usually see related to CDBG and home funds each year. So in terms of qualifying populations, home funds can only be used, again, for the purpose of reducing homelessness and increasing housing stability. So it's for expressly sheltered and unsheltered homeless populations, those that may be currently housed but at risk of homelessness, those families that are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence or human trafficking, families that might just need a little bit of services, a little bit of support before they fall into homelessness. They're probably at the greater risk of housing instability. And then any of those homeless families that have a household member that is a veteran. Eligible activities are also outlined by HUD. It can be used for the development and preservation of affordable rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive and housing services, and then non-congregate shelters, so individual sheltering opportunities for our homeless. And then a maximum of 15% can be used for administrative cost. So as outlined within the guidance, we had to develop our Home ARP process, usually being informed through both a qualitative and quantitative data analysis that was inclusive of community stakeholders, community engagement, looking at HUD Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy data, the American Community Survey data, and then understanding what we had existing for resources for our homeless population to determine what the needs were, where there are gaps in services, and then what our priorities would be. And then the last step upon developing the plan and after this public hearing is the submittal of that document to HUD. So for data collection, we did do outreach to 19 different stakeholders who have their clientele and who best know this qualified population group. We did it through a variety of sources, whether they were meetings, correspondence, surveys, one-on-one discussions with them, and then asked them questions about what they saw as gaps in services, needs, and what their priorities were. As we heard just probably earlier this month, we are going through our Fiscal Year 2223 CDBG Home Program. And so through that process, we also engaged the community about their needs related to all of our federal housing dollars, including Home ARP. We went before the Housing Commission in February to receive their input and hold a public meeting to also get the public's input. We did a community need survey. The plan has been available for the 15-day required period, and tonight, we have a public hearing to, again, provide another opportunity for the public to comment on the plan. And then, more importantly, we did also consult with the Continuum of Care Council and Regional Task Force on the Homeless, on the point-in-time count and the data there. So in terms of the gaps and the needs, we have, based on point-in-time count data, 408 persons experiencing homelessness. The majority of those are unsheltered. We've got over 6,000 households at risk. And when we talk about "at risk," that means households at the very low-income category that are paying more than 50% of their income towards housing costs. In terms of shelter gaps, we have a gap of about 305 beds for individuals. We've got 166 congregate beds here in the City of Oceanside, and hopefully at the end of this summer, we'll have an additional 50 beds with our upcoming Low Barrier Navigation Center. The 305 is derived from taking those that are unsheltered in the community minus the congregate beds that are available for individuals. In terms of housing, we have a gap of over 9,000 affordable housing units. That's determined by looking at the market of available rental housing and what's restricted, and then minusing the households in our community that are at very low income and that are experiencing some sort of severe housing problem, whether that's a housing burden, being overcrowded, or other serious issues. Because of the numbers that you see before you, staff is recommending that in terms of our Home ARP dollars, that we are focusing our attention on this gap of affordable units. Given the serious deficit of affordable housing that's available to our very low-income housing, the households with escalating housing pricing in the marketplace, that it's the root cause, one of the root causes of homelessness, and it certainly serves as that hindrance of those who are exiting homelessness, trying to find more stable housing and be long-term housed. We feel that this is where we ought to be concentrating our ARP dollars. And again, you can see 408 persons who are experiencing homelessness versus over 6,000 that are at risk of being and falling into homelessness. So with that, we are prioritizing the development or preservation of affordable rental housing, and it is also in part because Oceanside has been very proactive in trying to address the needs of its sheltered community. We are blessed with having a very robust Section 8 housing voucher program. Many of those vouchers are available to homeless persons. We have used previous home dollars to provide directly tenant-based rental assistance. We're in the process of building that Low Barrier Navigation Center, so adding more beds. And so what we really, truly do need is more diverse housing stock, and housing stock that is affordable to those very low-income households, and hence the recommendation. And again, Oceanside has been very, very proactive. So before we even knew we had Home ARP dollars, the council decided we put out some dollars and put a NOFA out there to look at projects to house our very low income. And as a result of that, you saw Greenbrier Village come before you. So what we are proposing is to switch those dollars out, the inclusionary housing fee dollars that were originally committed, and switch them out for this funding source. Seems much more compatible, given that this is a project, Greenbrier is a project that does permanent supportive housing for homeless. It will have housing for veterans, it will have housing for TAE youth or transitional age youth, and it'll be at the 30% income level, so it fits very nicely into the Home ARP priorities. So we are recommending that it be committed to the Greenbrier Village project. So with that, that concludes staff's recommendation and request that the City Council hold that public hearing on the funding priorities, approve the funding plan, and it's submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we are available to answer questions.
Thank you. This is the time for the public to be able to comment on this item. Do we have any advanced requests to speak on this?
We do not have any advanced written requests to speak on this item.
Okay. You do not have to have filed with the city clerk a request. You can simply come up to the podium, give us your name, and you can speak for up to three minutes on this item. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. Given the information that we have been given, with the $2.2 million that Oceanside has been allocated, and minus the 15% administrative cost, my rough guesstimate, and I could be wrong on it, is about $1,800,000, if that's approximately correct there. That is what the remainder that we're dealing with. And if we're looking at also the average rent in Oceanside or into the North County area, is about $2,600 a month. If we use any traditional rent in that area, you can see it would be rapidly vanishing. Also, I would like to point out that, and I believe Pasadena VA up there, they used some of their property up there. It was recently on television, what they did, is that they used some of their property there. They put in little houses on the property for their veterans that were homeless up there. And what they did is that they started having an impact onto their homeless veteran population in that area. in that area. And because people then were able to live on the veteran assistance site, VA site, and they used this transitional housing. One thing that has been brought up, and I have to give this credit to Linda Washaw, as she pointed out that mobile homes could take and easily be set up on some vacant land that the city has, and you could easily have that set up within a month and having housing put in and potentially within a month or even hours if it was necessary to take and help, you know, take care of some of our homeless population or at-risk population. And then you could set up a program where they could actually pay back, once employed, some of that cost, and then that could be refilled into another person that would be able to take and be housed. And it could be cycled through again and again, feeding to take care of others. So there are a couple of options that you might want to think about. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Are there any other requests to speak on this? If you would like to speak on this, please rise and approach the podium at this time. I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and come to the council. We have Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. So this is federal funds, correct?
Yes, sir.
And when the city of Oceanside accepts federal funding, we have, what jurisdictions do we have to help the families that you reference in your data that are needing our help, the Oceanside residents in our city? Do we have discretion to prevent someone from Texas or Escondido from applying for these benefits?
No, sir, we do not.
Got it.
Due to fair housing, federal and both state fair housing laws, we cannot prohibit the use of or restrict them simply to Oceanside residents. We obviously do provide a live-work preference, but it is a preference only but not restrictive.
So very important when we're looking at receiving these funds and talking about more affordable housing and more affordable opportunities, you know, I really appreciate city staff's direction in this. I think it's a great opportunity to take funding that we receive from the development community under our inclusionary housing ordinance for affordable housing, which gives the city of Oceanside complete discretion and jurisdiction of actually helping Oceanside residents and not using those funds and replacing it with this federal funding, which there's really no rules. So in essence, when we talk about, you know, 6,000 households at risk in the city of Oceanside and a gap of 9,420 affordable units needed and 1,800 existing needed, these are all irrelevant numbers when it's tied to our efforts received from the federal government because we have no control over who applies. So we can build the units, we can take this money, but if somebody from Timbuktu, Arkansas, wants to apply, we have to receive their application, and they could facilitate moving into one of these units, and that leaves an Oceanside resident behind. So it's very, very important that the public is aware of that. I totally support staff's direction on this. I just wanted to point that out. I really think we need to free up the in-lu fees so that we can help Oceanside residents. And so, good job, staff. I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
There's a motion in a second. No other requests to speak.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. We are now on item 18, adoption of a resolution establishing a new fee for opting out of advanced metering infrastructure, that's AMI, in order to fully recover the costs associated with providing the service. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosure from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence. We have received a few emails.
The public and staff.
Public and staff.
Public, staff.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
Yes, we had three emails that were forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a report by Michael Newton, management analyst. Mr. Newton?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Michael Newton. I am a management analyst with the Water Utilities Department here to present the establishment of a new fee for opting out of advanced metering infrastructure tonight. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution establishing a new fee for opting out of the advanced metering infrastructure program. Council approved public works agreement, professional service agreements, and purchase orders for the AMI program back in August of 2020, and the program was launched in summer of 2021, designed to fully automate the city's meter reading, which would increase efficiency and staff safety and reduce vehicle accidents. AMI also allows the Water Utilities Department to increase engagement with our customers through the online customer portal known as WaterSmart. Since the project's launch, the utility has received a handful of requests to opt out of the AMI reads and instead have their meters read manually. While the number of requests to opt out has been small, those requesting the option are adamant about not having their meter read via the AMI system. When incorporating manual meter reads into the fully automated system, some of the benefits that come with automation are reduced. The costs associated with obtaining manual meter reads are due to the staff's need to make an individual trip out to read the meter, as well as then process and post a separate billing batch for that meter. Residents wishing to opt out of the AMI program can contact the Water Utilities Department to have their account amended and their meter designated for manual readings, provided that they are current on all previous billing. The proposed opt-out fee is $20, which would recur on a monthly basis, and the proposed fee would not fully recover the costs associated with providing the service. The expected revenue is unknown at this time, as we don't know how many people will actually use the program. The fee is subject to review on an annual basis, and any revenue will be deposited in the Water Operating Fund Water Sales Administrative Fees Account. So staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution establishing the new fee for opting out of the advanced metering infrastructure program. This concludes my presentation, and I'll remain by the dais for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. This is the time for the public to comment on this item. Do we have any people who have submitted a slip?
Yes, we have one person that did submit a slip, Richard Newton.
Okay, Richard, Mr. Newton, come on forward. You do not have to submit a slip. You can simply come up to the podium and speak, give your name, and speak for up to three minutes. So it's all right. You don't have to get up there and just very clearly speak your name when you come up to the podium. Okay.
Mayor, members of the city council, and the public, I am here tonight to voice concerns about the proposed AMI smart meter opt-out fee plan. I thank the mayor and the council for recognizing the need for an opt-out. Privacy is the chief concern, and we should emphasize that water consumption activity is activity. With that in mind, consider that an hourly AMI meter transmits 720 data points in a 30-day billing period, yet only the last data point is needed for billing. The other 719, a stunning 99.86% of transmissions, are simply for surveillance. From this, it should be clear that the AMI smart meter is really a surveillance device masquerading as a billing device. Privacy is a right. This dictates that any opt-out fees must be reasonable. Part of the problem is the city's idea of making those who opt out a self-funded program. Instead, opt-outs should be considered part of the AMI program, and here's why. Given privacy concerns, informed consent should be obtained prior to installing AMI devices. But informed consent also implies the right to freely decline without punishment. Being cast off into some other expensive program or charged punitive fees is punishment. Just consider last month's proposed monthly opt-out fee of $74 per month. All of this means that the AMI program must accommodate those who decline. It follows from this that overhead costs involved with the opt-outs should be absorbed by the AMI program. And this is fair because, one, those who opt out have paid into the Water Department for years or even decades and still have a right to reasonable access to water services. Two, opt-outs are currently expected to pay for AMI costs. And three, the presence of an opt-out choice will be available to all and therefore is a benefit to all, whether they elect to use it or not. This is analogous to Waste Management's offer for five free bulk item pickups per year. It is an optional benefit available to everyone, and the cost is absorbed generally by Waste Management. If the city insists on making opt-outs a distinct and self-funded program, then those who choose to opt out should be exempted from all the costs related to AMI. But this is problematic and will cause accounting difficulties for the city. In summary, the best course of action is to adopt a minimal fee and cover the opt-out deficits from any general Water Department or AMI program funding. Regarding fees, the proposed fee is too high and is unfair to those who are economically challenged yet still value their right to privacy. Although the California Public Utilities Commission does not have jurisdiction over municipalities, they have used due diligence in determining opt-out fees to consist of an initial $75 fee followed by a $10 monthly fee for a maximum of 36 months. I would ask the council to adopt this fee plan. When one considers that Carlsbad does not charge any fee to opt out, this requested reduction is not unreasonable. I would also ask the city council to establish a citizens' work group to assist with solutions to this and other aspects of the program. And I thank you for your time. I have 10 seconds left. There's so much more here that needs to be said, it can't be conveyed in a three-minute presentation to the council. So I would ask that we set up a citizens' work group and communication channels to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please rise, approach the podium, give your name clearly, and you can speak for up to three minutes, either one.
My name is J.J. Kokovka. I live here in Oceanside on Bella Colina Street, and I have a mayor and city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I am retired firefighter, paramedic, and a retired sheriff's deputy, reserve sheriff's deputy, paramedic. I have some concerns about the AMI program. The first and most important concern is our right to privacy. I know that our lawyers and city council here are well-versed, more well-versed than the law than I am. However, our right to privacy is sacrosanct. In fact, the framers of our constitution thought it was just so sacrosanct they made a member of the Bill of Rights or a portion of the Bill of Rights. So this program will give the city much, much more information than is needed to generate a monthly bill. One bill should necessitate one reading, not, as Mr. Newton just said, 720 readings necessitate one bill. Something is wrong with there. As it stands, the opt-in fee. But as it stands, with the, I would like to have you guys consider the opt-in fee, I think you are, but as it stands, with the opt-in fee, should you decide to exercise your constitutional right to privacy, the opt-out fee is now $20. That's what you're proposing. So we have to pay to exercise our property right, but if we don't, if we don't choose not to exercise our property rights, it's free? Something's wrong with that. Let's see. And the opt-in residents' smart meters, the meters themselves from the city product, they're free, but to opt out and not get any product, they cost us $20 a month? Something is not right about there. I think it should be reversed, shouldn't it? In your program, the cost schedule is reversed. I don't like that at all. I'll bet your constituents won't either.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please rise, approach the podium, please provide your name, and if you could spell your last name, that would be great. And then you have three minutes, up to three minutes to speak.
Ed Clifford, C-L-I-F-F-O-R-D. And I won't need my three minutes, I just want to make several points. The first is, I'm a little bit baffled, although I haven't researched this in detail, as to why Carlsbad could have a similar program and not charge anything for an opt-out. The second thing is, I don't think it's fair. I would be willing to pay the $20, but I don't think it's fair, and I will pay it. I don't think it's fair that I would pay that and still have to pay the fees for the AMI program to be rolled out. It seems like that's a double dip. And really, the last thing is, I think it would be reasonable if there was a working group that took a look closely at some alternative possibility. With that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. There are some questions that were posed by the public, if staff could respond to that. Mainly, what is the actual cost, basically, for someone to actually go out to the house to do the, you know, check the meter? Is it the $20?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer with the Water Utilities Department. To answer your question first, Honorable Mayor, staff did calculate the cost for the average resident, again, trying to pick the middle ground of the large service area of the city of Oceanside. Staff determined that that cost would be about $72 for one person to go have their meter read. Obviously, the cost would change depending on how many people decided to opt out, and as of this time, we don't know. There's only a few people who have requested this to date. The majority of people who have contacted us in opposition of having the AMI system installed, after communicating with our staff and learning more about the project, have in fact changed their mind and allowed the meter to be installed. To address the other items that were brought up in the public hearing, some of the examples that were provided as far as waste management not requiring an additional fee, waste management is not subject to Proposition 218 as the Water Utilities Department is. And Prop 218 requires that the utility cannot subsidize costs with other ratepayers and other customers within the utility. So other agencies that are not requiring an opt-out fee could perhaps be in violation with Proposition 218. The majority of utilities who do have AMI installed to date actually do not offer an opt-out, but some agencies have decided to offer that as an option to their customers, but with associated fees. These fees do range from $0 to up to $61 in some areas. And again, they vary based on the agency. As far as the privacy concerns, so the utility is not monitoring this hourly data, this data is provided so that the customers can monitor their own water consumption. And data and studies have shown, there's been American Water Works Association in conjunction with UC Santa Barbara, who have done studies looking at the behavioral modifications of customers specifically related to AMI projects, and have shown that when customers are able to see their actual water usage, they do conserve water more and are able to modify their behaviors. Staff is only looking at individual account data if we are contacted by a customer. And in fact, just last week, we did receive an email from a resident who recently had AMI installed at their house, commending the technology because they actually went on vacation and received a notification that they had had water use for 24 hours consistently, identifying potential leak at their resident. They were able to have someone go to their resident, turn off their water, and then when they returned, found where the leak was located. So that prevented that water use that entire time they were out of the state. If there are any other questions as far as that came up that I missed, I'm happy to address those as well.
I believe you responded to all the questions that were posed by the public, and if you can stand by for potential questions from the dais, thank you. And I want to say, I actually ended up having two leaks and was able to check the meter, the little diamond, to be able to tell that there was a water leak, but it would have been nice to have been gotten some kind of a message, because I don't check that very often at all. Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for coming out and presenting your cases on, and...
Thank you for coming out and presenting your cases on, from your perspective. I think the city of Oceanside, myself, and I believe the majority on the dais, fully support your privacy and, from your perspective, wanting to have that peace of mind to be able to opt out. And I want anyone in the city of Oceanside to have that peace of mind, that they have the ability to opt out on new infrastructure and not have to pay a fee to do so, you know, to feel that they're penalized because their peace of mind says, I want more freedom for the government not to monitor my water usage on a regular basis. And so I totally respect that. I don't think we have enough data as a city to assess what we should be charging customers in the city of Oceanside who choose to opt out. And what I'm hearing from staff is the number is very small. And so I would like to see at least 12 months, maybe even 24 months. I'll see what my colleagues decide of what those opt-outs look like and what that cost actually looks like. And then we can come to the drawing board on a future agenda item to say, okay, here's the cost. We don't want to be in violation of XYZ state law. Let's now charge $4 a month, or whatever that looks like, because that's the actual tangible cost that we've been able to actually assess moving forward. So I would like to make a modified motion, and I respect staff's recommendation and the consultant we hired on this, but I would like to make an alternative motion to do no cost the first year, then after the annual assessment, which we're going to do anyway, divide the cost by the actual opt-outs and implement those in year two. And what we may see is it's just so minuscule, it becomes a mute point. But I respect state law and what we have to implement and to not be in violation to avoid lawsuits. So that would kind of be my alternative motion, but I want to hear what my colleagues have to say.
My concern with that motion is that we cannot, the public cannot subsidize the cost of someone manually having to go out and read the meter. So that would have to be, that would have to be charged to that home per month. I can't imagine someone wanting to wait a year and then get a big bill.
No, no, not a big bill. So they're not going to be charged anything, because we don't know enough at this juncture.
They have to be charged the actual cost. The rest of the public, you and I cannot subsidize that work, that employee going out to that home and reading that meter. There's a cost to that. Who is going to pay that? Nothing is free, right? So we can't say no.
No, I get that, but where is the risk? Where's the liability? Who's going to come and say, you violated state law, now you're liable, here's the damages?
Anyone who is paying a bill...
Then when that happens, then we can have this conversation again.
I could say I'm going to raise this issue on behalf of the public. So that's a concern that I have, because that is a violation.
Well, I want to hear what the city attorney has to say, but I don't think it's appropriate to be charged $20 a month out the gate on this.
Well, that's the actual cost. Actually, the actual cost...
It's actually, I think the cost the department is saying is $70 some dollars, and they're proposing a fee substantially lower, so there already is subsidization going on, I guess, to some extent, but...
Then we're already subsidizing, Mayor.
My understanding, and I think the department needs, Lindsay could probably elaborate on this, there are a handful of meter readers who are still going to be working for the city. Is that correct? And they could be available to read these meters? Or are they doing other work? I think you might want to address that.
Thank you. So the Water Utilities Department did distribute a memo back in 2020 when we were looking at this project for award. And at that time, we had discussed that with implementation of AMI, the department would be reducing the water meter services staff by seven and a half FTEs, full-time equivalents. By, the staff that will remain within that department are going to be doing other things other than reading meters. So there is maintenance still required, cleaning meter boxes, clearing our areas, making sure that the equipment is still functioning, still removing and testing meters and replacing them on a normal basis. So requiring to go and manually read these meters was not part of that study, including the staffing study, or any of the fiscal analysis that have gone into our modeling for our rates. So this would require us to potentially bring back a full-time equivalent in order to do this. So there are costs. We just, again, don't know exactly what they are, but...
We don't have enough knowledge, and from the mayor's perspective, we're subsidizing $50 right now, as it is. So are you saying you want to charge the public $74 if they want to opt out a month? Is that what you're saying? Because we're subsidizing right now.
What I'm hearing, because I did ask about this and had a conversation with the city manager, I mean, the city attorney, and that is that staff had come forward, was planning on coming forward with a $70, but that it was deemed too high. And so staff redid their studies and are proposing, at this time, $20, which may have to go up, it's not going to go down, for someone to go out, to go drive over, that's gas, and also that person's time, which is, what, $20 an hour? Something more than that? To go read that meter? And if there happened to be others on that, you know, I mean, I think that whole thing is taken into consideration for the 20. 20, I believe, is the rock bottom lowest that ought to be charged. There needs to be charged something, because that is an actual cost that cannot be borne by the public because of 218. And that's the problem. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, I have a question, because I recall in the data that we were provided a few weeks ago, it looked to me like the majority of the cities that were the same size as Oceanside were not charging a fee. There were only two that were actually charging a fee for this.
Excuse me while I go through my papers. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Johnson. So there are representative utilities that we have provided in a similar memo to council. There are other ones in this area that do and as well do not require a fee for the opt-out. What staff has done is compared our utility to other comparable utilities in the state of California, as well as in other states, where, so city of Oceanside has a much different service area, much larger service area, and a lot more customers than the majority of the service areas in San Diego County. So we did look at other agencies outside of San Diego County and throughout the state. One system or one agency that is very similar to us is City of Santa Rosa. They actually have a very similar terrain, very similar size of service area and number of customers. And additionally, they also use the same exact software and system that we are using. And for example, City of Santa Rosa does not offer an opt-out. Fallbrook Public Utilities District does not offer one. Padre Dam Municipal Water District does not. Eastern does not. Western Municipal does not. Rincon Del Diablo does not. Those are just a few within San Diego County that do not. There are others that do. Alivenheim Water District does offer an opt-out at a fee. They originally actually started at a $75 a month fee, and they have recently reduced that, but they also only have a single customer. I hope that answers your question. But I think the only one in San Diego County that has AMI and does not offer an opt-out is Carlsbad, to my knowledge.
Okay. Yeah, I have a hard time charging people for their right to privacy. It's mentioned in five amendments to the Constitution. So it's obviously very important, and people are entitled to it. You know, it's a right that we have. And if somebody's concerned that that right is being violated or taken away in any way, shape, or form, we should not charge them for that. And so I don't think there should be a fee to opt out at all.
Councilmember Johnson, do you agree that they do have a right to opt out to avoid their issue of privacy, but who then pays for that service? For a city employee to go out to that house and measure...
I don't think we've received enough information tonight, or enough regarding the law or the rules, to say, yeah, let's charge people for their right to privacy. I have a huge problem with that.
Charging is not for the right of privacy.
And we don't have the numbers.
Deputy Mayor, come.
For the sake of moving forward, I mean, if we're going to go in this slippery slope of subsidizing this or that, people who are paying for the money, they're paying for the smart meters they install but not using one, so they're not subsidizing them. I just, I think that, you could argue that all day long. And this, coming to council with just four of us, and again, we don't, I'm comfortable tonight, if we do six months, if Councilman Rodriguez will do that and get more data, six months with no fee, and then we can move forward, and then we can make a decision when there's five council members. Otherwise, we're going to be at 2-2. So if Councilmember Rodriguez would be up to that, then I'll second that motion, and I'd like to call for a vote.
Can I offer one clarifying point, just to make sure we're all on the same page? The program will, the program as a whole is a meter replacement program, so the customers would only be opting out of having a transmitter installed. All customers within the city would still have their meter replaced. It would just not have a data transmitter included in that. So I wanted to be clear on what that program is.
Yeah, it's still a cost.
It would still be a manual read with a dial. It just wouldn't have the data transmitter.
So if I understood the motion correctly, it would be for us to evaluate the data for six months of the actual costs and return to council. It would have to be a public hearing with a proposed fee based on our actual cost data. I mean, I'm elaborating a little bit, but I think that was the intent. Is that right?
That's the motion. Just to get us through tonight, it's...
Would you consider four months?
Never mind, I guess so.
Would you consider four months, so that we can come back in six months to give staff time to...
I made the alternate motion. Chris Rodriguez accepted it. I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay, so there was, there wasn't, okay, so there was no motion, there was no second on the first motion, so that failed. So now there is the motion to continue this for six months, during which time there will be no charge for the manual reading, and that staff will come back to provide the actual costs.
At a public hearing and proposed a fee based on actual costs.
At a public hearing, we'll have five council members on the dais.
That's what I heard.
Okay. Motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you very much. That is the end of this council meeting. We adjourn now to the next meeting, which is May 4, 2022, 3:30. Thank you.
One more call, please, but good.
Sorry.
[music]